Check, check.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Galt City Council for Tuesday, June the 21st, 2022. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, we have to continue to handle our council meetings a little bit differently for the protection of the public and our staff. I'm now going to ask City Manager, Mr. Heinz, to give a brief explanation to the public. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to everyone. Although this meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted in person, today's agenda states that we are also using audio-only teleconference options, which allows for the public to provide live public comment remotely. Members of the public may use the Zoom link described in the agenda to enter the webinar via audio only, and they should be able to use the Raise Their Hand feature to speak when the mayor announces the time for general public comment or when a specific agenda item is called, if your comment concerns an item on the agenda. Attendees should also see a lower hand feature if they change their mind or do not want to speak. Members of the public may also use the call-in feature described in the agenda. You may just listen if you prefer, but if you would like to speak when the mayor announces the time for public comment, you may do so by pressing star nine at that time. We request that all speakers, in person or on the phone, provide their name and address when they are called on to speak, but doing so is not required. Today's agenda states that residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting, which will be distributed to the city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting. That concludes my comments. Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you. Can we get a report from our closed session?
Yes. Council considered one item of anticipated litigation in closed session was provide information and received provided direction, and there's no report of action.
All right. Thank you, sir. I will now call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Yeah.
Councilmember Papino.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Farmer.
Here. If everyone can please join us in a silent prayer, followed by our flag salute.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well.
Tina, could you please read our replay statement?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/Universe Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 24th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 25th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to item F, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Anything from council? Okay. Next, item G, we have presentations. Tonight, we have the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2020 to 21 Annual Report. Looks like it's going to be given by, actually Chief Kalanowski is not here this evening, so who will be?
Captain Small is on his way in to provide the report.
Yes. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Measure R was approved by voters in November 2008 to provide additional funding for public safety. As a result of the measure, the municipal code requires Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee provide an annual report to the city council and the public, which is what we're presenting here this evening. The role of the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee is to review the expenditures of Measure R revenue to ensure that the use of these revenues are in compliance with the purpose specified in the police services expenditure plan. The Measure R Oversight Committee met during the year to review the financial information and other program information. The submitted annual report is being provided from the committee based on information from the meeting and the audited financial statements for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Committee members confirmed that proper stewardship was maintained over these funds in accordance with Measure R sales tax ordinance. I will be glad to answer any questions you might have regarding this report.
Kevin Small, just, even though you kind of mentioned it already, just for those that might be watching at home that may not be familiar with Measure R, could you just quickly describe again what that is and tell us again real quick about what, how, what the Oversight Committee, like, the purpose of it?
Sure. Measure R is a half-cent sales tax ordinance that is directed specifically for public safety, and as those revenues come in, it's important that there's a mechanism in place to ensure that the intent of how those funds were intended to be spent when that was voted in, that that's continued to be upheld, and that the police department of the city uses those funds in accordance with the ordinance. Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee is a committee that helps do that. So what we'll do throughout the year is present different programs that we're using, Measure R funds to introduce, or staffing, increasing staffing levels, different things like that, and they will provide their thoughts and direction in terms of whether that's an appropriate use of the funds or not.
Okay. Thank you for that. Do we have any public comment on this?
No public comment.
All right. No, no questions from council then? All right. Thank you, Captain Small. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I need a motion to approve the Measure R Oversight Committee Fiscal Year 2021 Annual Report. Moved by Councilman Vandenberg, seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Approved four to zero. Moving on to item H, Public Comment. Tina?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comments section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to city council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
And do we have any public comment this evening?
Harry Wenzel? Is it on? What's the topic?
Oh, the topic is, just a general topic, on reports.
Okay.
Good evening, council. As usual, thank you for all the hard work that you put in. I just have a couple of short comments, and these are not criticisms. They don't have to be done, but I think they'd be improvements for the public when you're trying to read the reports or you're watching the council meetings. The first one is, when there's a presentation like HDL, it was one of the more interesting presentations we've had, but the, the written presentation that was flashed up on the board was not included in the package. So you have to decipher that. You have to go back through the video to see, and there was a lot of good information in there. I would like to see things like that go into, even if they're added retroactively to the agenda reports. When presentations are made specifically, particularly by the department heads and the directors, they put a lot of verbiage in there as to, you know, this is required by code such and such and such and such, and as Officer Small just had, you know, it's pursuant to this, and it was approved by the voters and so forth. I think that that would be better if that would just go as maybe an attachment, if you really feel you need it. If it needs to go on the body, you could ask the city attorney, you know, do I need to put this in the body? But for instance, like on the bids, I think it would be easier just to say, these were the three bidders, this was the amount that they were bidding, the amount of product they were bidding, this is what their bid was, this was the guy who won, and then maybe some, maybe, this is what we paid for it last year. So you can see, you know, what's inflation doing to our chemicals, for instance. It's a good report, but it's, it's pretty long for what it does. And then, just a comment, I like the section on the warrants, even though I don't know exactly who these people are. Sometimes I see it, and later on, it becomes something. But there is a big space there, and perhaps if there was a way in the computer where when that money is being expended, there might just be a note, just a general comment that says, like, there'd be a person's name. Maybe it's cleaning services, or detailing services, or, you know, maybe they did some kind of a graphic for the city. The bigger ones, where you see $30,000, $40,000, it would be nice to know, this is what project they're working on. So you could associate who that vendor is and how much money we're putting out to that vendor and what project it is. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Can I address that briefly?
Yeah.
Thank you, Harry. You know, you're a man after my own heart when it comes to that, and I think a good example of that is, I believe it's Hills Brothers Company that is actually not a coffee provider, but a chemical provider, and if you're suggesting if that kind of note was added in the middle empty section, it might do a lot of clarification and reduce some confusion.
It would make it more interesting as a start, and I think, I think the council meetings really have gotten more interesting over the last couple of years, and you might see more people, you know, come out to the council meetings and get more involved. That's always one of the problems is, you know, how do you get the citizens involved in what's going on? Because they really should be involved. They live here, you know. Any other comments? Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wenzel. Yeah, I actually think, I mean, because I know, like, we don't always ask about warrants, but occasionally, you know, we'll have questions. I know all of us will ask about a warrant, and I do think that if just a slight, and I know Mr. Boing is in the audience, just maybe just where it says, like, you know, four leaf, you know, four leaf engineering, for example, and then it has a check number, then it has an amount, if there was just another field that just said, like, you know, services via CPI or CIP, blah, blah, or just, you know, something, sometimes that could be really helpful, and it could save staff time, maybe, Mr. Heinz, like, just from you having to, like, get the email and then pass it on to him, and then him have to report back. I don't know. I don't know how difficult that'd be, but...
We'll take a look at the report and see if that's something that's easily done.
Okay.
To do that manually for 300 warrants, remember that senior accountant you denied? Yeah. Going to need that. So, but yeah, but we'll take a look and see if we can do that in an automated, automated for fashion.
Yeah, that would create a bunch of extra workload, just if it's, if it's not easily done, then maybe no, just...
And, and the information's always available for the asking, and just send the email, and we'll be happy to get that to you. Okay?
Now, if, if, just now you mentioned that, if a citizen is reading the agenda packet online, and they have a question about a warrant, I mean, they can...
Yes.
Email the city and ask.
Oh, yeah. Just send it to me, and I'll be happy to get it to you.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we're transparent.
All right. Do we have any additional public comment?
No public comment.
No calls online, phone, Zoom?
None.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, we'll move past public comment to item I, Reports by City Council Members on Regional Boards, Commissions, and Committees. We'll start with the Vice Mayor, Mr. Sandu.
Nothing to report this evening, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday, I attended the Consumers Groundwater Authority. We approved our budget, and I think the item of most note is that the governor of California executed Order N-7-22 kind of out of nowhere, but this requires anybody that alters their well to have it reviewed by the state or county to make sure, they're going to take, basically, take an assessment of the surrounding areas to make sure there's not excessive draw in certain portions of our reservoir. I understand the logic behind it, but it's, it's, as far as I know, they didn't really take into consideration, if I have, you know, $400,000 of almond crops and I lose my well, I need it running tomorrow, not when the government decides it's good and well, which is why our supervisor, Natoli, asked to be updated on the side, you know, he wants to get more briefed on what the law is, where we can go, and if exceptions need to be made, and what latitude he has in the county to help farmers and everyday citizens. There's also working on long-term funding, and Folsom is at 109% of historical storage, which is a little surprising, and that's all.
Councilman Vandenberg, was there, was there any public comment on that meeting, about that topic from anybody?
Yes, yes, there was, and that's where the analogy about the almond orchard, I, that's where I took that from. There were several, there was multiple, I can't write that fast, I'm afraid, but there were several people that brought up concerns similar to that and how it's, it's kind of a blanket law without flexibility at this point. We don't, you know, but I thought at least it should be mentioned in public square that people should be aware if they do alter their well, and that means if you replace your motor, even if it's existing size, same size, identical replacement, you need to report it. And there is, you know, that's, that's the basic of it, without getting any further into it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilman Lozano?
Wow. I thought there was permits for well stuff already, but maybe not. So I attended two meetings. One, the first was the California League of Cities Policy Committee, and there were several items in there that were talked about. I'll just highlight the one that I found pretty interesting. There is a, an assembly bill in the process right now, AB 1737. It's regarding childcare day camp licensing, and originally, it was written so that cities were going to be required to monitor all day camps, including our own, and ensure that people that work at the day camps have the proper fingerprinting and just a host of other things that was a duplication of services the state already has, Department of Health Services that oversees that, and so it's now changed a little bit so that the state is going to oversee it, and it's just going to be a small extension onto the daycare licensing process. And so, kind of a win there for the cities, so we're not going to be required to, to do that on our own, within our own jurisdictions. One other thing that was mentioned were fire safety councils, and I spoke to our fire chief about it, and he certainly is aware of them, and what they are are basically citizen groups and a program that come together to ensure fire safety in, in areas in which homes are threatened with wildfire regularly. And so it was pretty interesting. A lot of the San Diego County area, you know, the high desert out there also utilize them, and the end result is, is there are some additional funding that can come into place that will help. But in areas like ours, where we're surrounded by metropolitan areas, it's not necessarily a thing that we need to do, but it was, like I said, nonetheless, interesting, and our fire department was online with, with the meeting as well. And then the SAICOG Board Meeting, there were a couple of different items, but the big item was the Citizens Transportation Tax Initiative, and so what that is, is there's a citizen group that is putting together a tax initiative to improve roadways and construct roadways and other transportation needs within Sacramento County. SAICOG is a six-county region, and so this only affects the Sacramento area, including our city. The interesting thing about this initiative is that it's citizen-based, and the requirement under the current law, and I say current because there's some thought that it's going to change probably pretty quickly, that a citizen tax initiative does not require, on a specific, on a specific tax, requires 66%, it only requires 50% plus one. So the report is really based on, once this, this initiative started going down the road, SAICOG, STA, and different organizations felt as though in order to maintain the state regulations of reducing greenhouse gas emissions should have some say in how that money is spent, should the measure pass. And, and so SAICOG took some action with the leadership of the Sacramento Mayor Dale Steinberg and handful of SAICOG Board members, and certainly STA members, to negotiate with the citizen group on putting language in an MOU so that SAICOG could assist in this expenditure of that money. So this is about an eight-and-a-half billion, eight-and-a-half billion dollar initiative over 40 years, and so it's, it's a lot of money, and, and again, it's driven by a citizen group, and so what SAICOG approved was language that their, SAICOG would have the authority to evaluate whether a project being funded under that initiative, should it pass through the voters, how, how it's mitigating their greenhouse gas emissions, and remember the 19% that, that was thrown at us by the state a few years ago. So, so there's that piece of it, and then if there is a, an issue with that or disagreement with the builder or developer of the project and SAICOG, then there'll be a third party that can come in and, and take a look at it as well. So, a lot of theory, a lot of, the MOU is really more of, when it comes to that point, we'll address it, but from SAICOG's board perspective, it's better than not having any, any input at all. And so, it, it's going to be interesting. First, it's got to be certified by the, the county, and, and there's, there's thought that there's enough votes to get it put on the ballot, and then the voters in Sacramento have to pass it. So it'll be interesting. Like I said, it was a quite lively conversation, and, and it, it is unique in that it's a citizen-driven tax initiative that will likely be on the ballot. So, got to be aware of that, and, you know, we'll, we'll see how that all rolls out.
Councilman Lozano, I'm curious, you stated SAICOG would have oversight, but not, they wouldn't have oversight of how the money was spent, just that it would meet the standards kind of like Measure R does for us?
Right.
And Measure R Committee? And Measure R Committee.
Right, right. So oversight in that oversight of the evaluation of greenhouse gas emissions related to projects. Now, if there and these are only projects that are not currently on schedule through the SACOG process, the MTPSCS, which is the 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 plan for the next two, three years, actually, twenty-four, two years, I guess. And so if there's not in that already and identified, they're the 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 folks that are building projects outside of that are going to have to show how they're not contributing to greenhouse gas emissions and SACOG will have the ability to do an evaluation on each of those projects. Now, that doesn't mean that projects that aren't in that plan right now won't be in two years when the when the money starts rolling in. And so there's that piece of it, too, where you know, if if it does come in and then that evaluation will have already been done by SACOG. So it's the ones that aren't already in the regional plan. I I forgot to mention that one of the other entities is the Southeast Connector JPA, which is made up of council people from Elk Grove, Ranch Cordova, Folsom, and some Sacramento County supervisors. And so that's the other piece. And as as best I can tell, it looks like that is really where the rub is, is that there's a piece of the connector that is not funded, that they would like to have funded and this citizen group put this initiative together. And and so that's the other piece. And so the idea through the this MOU is that all three will work together to to ensure that we remain on target. So anyhow, it that that will be coming to the SACOG Leadership Committee, which will meet before Ju- July, I think it's twelfth, that they have to have that MOU put together. And and the legal counsel and everybody's going to look at it and 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 move forward. So we had nothing at one point, and we have a little bit, in my estimation, a little bit of something. Not exactly everything SACOG staff wanted, but certainly something that we can work with. And that is really, like I said, the bulk of the report. So and then this week, I'm going to be going with SACOG to Salt Lake City to look at transportation and housing that they've done in the Provo, Salt Lake City area. And so I'll be going there for a couple of days and I'll report back on that when I get back. That's it.
Sounds nice.
It's going to be ninety-something degrees there. I don't know. Not much of a break from the weather.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Councilman Lozano. I only have a couple of small things, but I I wanted to mention to what Councilman Vanderburg was saying earlier. He made me think of a, he was talking about your service on the name the the name of the board, the groundwater. Right. So one thing I get a lot, and I don't know how many people are even watching, but one thing I get a lot online is people talking about, again, happened yesterday, is people talking about, you know, development. They go, where are we going to get all the water? I mean, this is a common thing I see people talking about on social media, where are we going to get the water? There's a perception, I guess, just because of the media that, you know, galt's going around the water and 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 I I want people to know they're watching this that, you know, we are continually apprised to this. We have council members who serve on boards who are in the in the know on that. Our our city manager is updated, our public works is updated. We have consultants that do various things, which I think one of them is tonight. Something to do with that. So anyways, I just want to let know if someone may be watching that that this is not something that we just approve development without extensive. So I I just thought I'd touch on that since you had mentioned it.
Yeah, to that to that point, and Mr. Selling actually gave us a quite poignant email explaining the use of water. Probably should just put it on social media every once in a while, you know, make it a a monthly habit maybe, but it's basically farmers use ten to one at least, if not more, water than cities.
Yeah, he did give us a good email, and I was able to share that once. So I appreciate that, Mr. Selling, for providing that information. It was very helpful. So I myself on regional boards, I attended on June thirteenth, I attended the Library Authority Board. It was actually a super short meeting, probably fifteen minutes. Nothing spectacular on the agenda, out of the ordinary. And then my homeless policy council was actually canceled or rescheduled tentatively to August twenty-first. So when I attend that, I'll report back from that. And that's all I had.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I can I make a comment?
Sure.
Uh, Councilmember Vanderburg, please let us know if there's anything the city can do, any letters of support that I can bring to council if there is opposition or concern about the well policy that the state has issued. So even though, you know, e- even though the Consumers Groundwater Agency may have a position, but if they're looking for support for their cities where that their board members are coming from, let me know and we'll be happy to get a letter in front of council.
Yeah, I understand. That's that's nice of you. Thank you. I would recommend that touch bases with Supervisor Natoli after he's had counsel himself because he wanted, he didn't want to drag the meeting on with questions and why not. So he just, you know, got side counsel, so to speak, and that's scheduled, I don't remember, later later this week or whatever, maybe next month at this point. But beyond that, I have a much firmer understanding of what can and cannot be done.
Okay, yeah. We're worried about our farmers. Councilmember Lozano, we'll keep an eye on SACOG and especially the projects that aren't there. I just wanted to let council know that the the leadership of SACOG, the staff level, are very big fans of the galt market plan. I just thought I'd mention that to you. And they will actually, they've actually offered to come and speak before council before we actually start that discussion again. So I just thought I'd let you know since they're, they may be looking for projects. And the last thing I wanted to say was the PowerPoint presentations that are presented here in council, if they're not in the packet, I realize that that can be an inconvenience, but those PowerPoints, all PowerPoints are posted online after the meetings. So including the HDL PowerPoints. So they're out there for downloading. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll send you the link and and kind of show you the path. And that'll be the that'll be the common path for all of the PowerPoints. Okay, so that way we just, you'll know where they are. Okay, and I wanted to make sure the public knew that as well. Okay? All righty, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. All right, moving on to our information consent calendar. It is recommended that items one through six be acted upon simultaneously unless a separate discussion and or action is requested by a council member. Do I have anything from council on the consent calendar? All right. Well, with that, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the following six items. Number one is going to be the minutes of the special meeting from June second, two thousand twenty-two, and the regular meeting of June seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Receiving file warrants for period ending June eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Item three is going to be our treasury report for the period ending April, two thousand twenty-two. Item four is going to be the award of chemical supply contracts. Item five is going to be the award of analytic laboratory testing of potable drinking water and wastewater and semi-annual groundwater monitoring and report preparation contract. And number six, the approval to include the City of Galt and Article thirty-four Affordable Housing Ballot Measure proposed by the County of Sacramento for November eighth, two thousand twenty-two election. I have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I moved.
Moved by Councilman Lozano. Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanderburg.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano.
Aye.
Mayor Farmer.
Aye. Consent and comments approved four to zero. All right, moving on to our next item K. Scheduled matters, notice of public hearing. Our first items tonight is going to be the public hearing to adopt the fiscal year budget two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three. Actually, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. Approved the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three master fee schedule, the capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-six, twenty-seven, and revised fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three California constitutional appropriations limit appropriations limit. Mr. Heinz.
Actually, Director Boring will be handling this.
Evening. I just wanted to give a quick update. On page four of the staff report, there's a table for the council direction requested. And the Christmas lights on there. Just to clarify more, that's ARPA-funded. We we record ARPA in our general fund, but that is funded with the ARPA grants.
Thank you. I was going to ask that was one of my questions tonight.
So we wanted to get that clarification out of the way. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. The presentation, the proposed budget began with council's consideration with the narrative budget report back on April nineteenth. On that date, council received a presentation regarding our fiscal status. On May third, the council received a presentation of the proposed budget for the general fund. The the process continued throughout May seventeenth with the presentation of the proposed budget for the other operating funds. Additionally, on June second and June seventh, staff held a budget workshop for council for the purpose of providing additional or or seeking additional input on the proposed budget. On May twenty-fourth, the council made the proposed budget document, sorry, May twenty-fourth, the city made the proposed budget available to the public. And today, staff are seeking public input and the adoption of the fiscals fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. And every two years, the City of Galt adopts a biennial biennial operating budget, which reflects planned activities for the next fiscal years. And so, Mr. Mayor, we are seeking to adopt the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four biennial budget. Approved the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three master fee schedule, the capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-six, twenty-seven, and the revised fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three California constitutional appropriations limit. And that concludes our comments.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And we'll keep it open while council has questions. So opening the public hearing. Does council have any comments on the budget? Questions?
I do. I realize this is an adjustable document. At the same time, to be quite honest, I I thought we would be much farther along in resolving the problems with the lighting and landscaping. We are constantly seeing on social media and getting emails, I am anyway, and I know Sean is, about the city is not doing their job. The reports that we get is that we have more funding, but this issue hasn't been finalized. I know it still will be addressed. I I fully understand that. At the same time, this is going to be approved, or you're asking us to approve a budget that has not addressed it. And, you know, on behalf of the citizens, I'm inclined to vote no on it, to be quite honest, because they pay for everything and and their prob- their primary complaint has not been addressed. It's it's just a beleaguered point, for lack of a better term. And then on page four or five, I see that an accounting position has been removed from it. And, you know, after after last meeting, I would honestly, I'm going to ask support from my fellow council members to have that position removed completely. I'm not sure of the, you know, the exact phrasing that needs to happen for that, but I know at this point it's not funded, but I want the position removed because not only did we vote it down twice, and it still came back subtly onto our agenda to be voted on, which quite frankly, I found a little disrespectful. I think it's a it's disrespectful, the council's decision-making. And for that reason, I'm asking for support from my fellow council members to have that position removed.
Let me jump in on the on the request to have it removed. I'm not sure if you're asking for it to be removed tonight.
No, no, we cannot do that.
Right.
It has to come back as an as an agenda item.
Okay. Okay. That because that the action that council had previously taken a month or whenever it was was a specific resolution to create the classification of that position, if I recall. So any subsequent action the council wants to take has to be agendized, and that would have to be considered. So it can't happen tonight.
So the the consensus last meeting, to be clear, was that we removed it from the budget. When we, when there was a three-two consensus, that was to remove it from the budget. That's what the last meeting we did, right?
Correct.
So what you're saying is what?
What I'm saying is a consensus is not codified. It's it's not a vote.
Right, but it was the consensus wasn't, it wasn't removed. So you're asking for something different?
No, this position is still there. It's not funded, right? It shows here online, you know, removal of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So it's not funded, but the position itself still exists. And we we voted to a month and a half ago, we we voted to have the position, but we paused on funding it. And then we're now we're here. I'll just skip all the rest.
Well, Mr. Vanderburg, I I understand you talking about we do not fund it, but you were totally removed so they can bring him back. I I I do understand. That's why I mentioned that. I know that this and we have to go through, but city manager, with the consent, so they can bring back that agenda item, then if we like it, then we can remove from that. Is Mr. Heinz, could it be possible?
I want to be clear on what. So I just want to clarify. So on whatever date it was, we we voted to create it, classify it. And then the second vote is we decided not to fund it. And then through subsequent meetings, whatever that Mr. Vanderburg mentioned, it was brought back. It was proposed in the budget. We decided last meeting with a three-two consensus to with other budget adjustments to have that removed. That was the direction given, and it's removed. But to be clear, what you're suggesting now tonight, you're looking for you're looking for consensus to remove it. So you're looking for consensus to re- to bring back in a future agenda item to re- to reverse the resolution to create that position. Is that what I just want to clarify with you?
I so move.
Okay, so you're looking to reverse council's action from March. Are there any other pit positions that you want to eliminate?
Not at this time.
Why is it you're focused on that, if I may ask?
Because it was put into the last agenda.
Yes.
Not advocated for. Previously, it was put on the agenda, advocated for originally, no problem with that. You brought it back the next council meeting and you advocated for it, and I pat you on the back for that. I compliment you for fighting for your team. I I I fully agree with that. I had no problem with that. Two or three council meetings later, it was brought back in silence. I I found that disrespectful when, after two votes, the council's the council's direction was quite clear.
So I meant no disrespect to the council. However, I thought I had a two-to-two vote and one member needed context for understanding the entire budget before a final decision could be made. And I figured over the intervening weeks, I provided that context, and that member clearly expressed himself with that consensus vote at the last meeting. That's why I was brought back, because I thought I had a two-to-two with one member needing consensus. And I can't have a two-to-two, and I brought it back to see if that member had all the information he needed to make that final decision. I meant no disrespect to the council. But I but that was my thinking, that I had a two-to-two, and I needed to get that resolved. So I did not mean to be aggressive or force it down council's throat. I just wanted to get final resolution on the vote.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. Okay, so you're still looking to eliminate the position?
That's correct, sir.
So I'm going to say this for my accounting staff. So this takes away a promotional opportunity for some of our folks in finance. And and that's what you're looking to do because they're listening.
As I said in two council meetings ago, in my personal comments, these decisions aren't easy. They're not fun sometimes, you know. But looking at our budget process and, you know, negotiations we have to go through, it's a it's a much larger picture. I don't like my decision sometimes, but I'm going to stand by this one.
But you do realize that we've already eliminated the funding for this position, and we've eliminated the additional headcount.
Okay, so.
I'm just making sure we're clear.
That's fine. That's that's great. It's what conversations in a public square is all about.
Yes.
So I didn't like that it came back a third time, but you know what really kind of pushed it over the edge is that it was mentioned in the council meeting that the city was already taking applications for a position we did not fund. So what I find, yeah, that's that's my recollection that. So, you know, I didn't I didn't go back and look at the video. I just made up my mind and I'm going to stick with it. I'm going to ask my fellow council members if they support me in removing the position. if they support me in removing the position. I don't wanna belabor.
Well, I think we should talk about...
Excuse me, I'm not done. Thank you.
Sorry.
I don't wanna drag it on. I think I've made my feelings quite clear. I hope that my fellow council members will vote their conscience. I take no offense if the position stays. I just felt it responsible, you know, my job as a public representative, I felt is the right thing to do. So that's what I'm going to do.
Okay. So you mentioned that the city was taking applications for a position that isn't funded. We are taking applications right now for the accounting manager. The accounting manager is the leader over the fiscal side, over the transactional side of the finance department. That position is established by council and has historically been part of the historical 12 FTEs that the finance department has. So, we don't take applications for positions that aren't funded. And I just wanted to make that clear for the public and for the council.
Perhaps staff stated incorrectly. That's why I didn't bring it up. I didn't wanna drag it out. Again, if it's, my fellow council members, you know, support it, they do. If they don't, they don't.
I think it may have been a misunderstanding on that position. I, you know, there's no sense in us trying to figure out if it was centered. I was gonna ask, just to clarify that the funding had been removed, and I know that the answer is yes, that it's been removed. You know, I originally, I was originally, and I could be incorrect, but I think I was, I was definitely one of the no votes with creating the position in the first place. I might have been the only no vote. I don't remember, but I know it was, I was one of the descending votes, and it went through. But, I mean, I appreciate that the funding is freed up. I think if what Councilman Vandenberg is asking is, I mean, this isn't something that gets decided right now. What Councilman Vandenberg is asking is that it be brought back as an agenda item for discussion for removal. I think the fact that Councilman Papin is not here tonight, I think I have respect for that, and I have respect for my colleague, Councilman Vandenberg, who seems very passionate about this. I would be in favor of bringing it back, so the full council could discuss it. That's what I would be in favor of. Yeah, I would be in favor of bringing that back for discussion.
So do we do that now, or at the end of the meeting for additional agenda items?
We can note it now, but I wanna get a formal vote on it at the end during the future agenda.
Okay, great.
Is there any other issues, Mr. Vandenberg, with the budget, or you want to circle back to you? I was, you have the floor still on the budget?
Yeah, I appreciate you pausing for a moment. That's after that conversation. No, I mentioned the two major items I'm concerned about. You know, I'm still kinda leaning on voting no, because lighting and landscaping still has not been addressed.
And, Mr. Mayor, if you, if I may?
Sure, yeah.
The lighting and landscaping service is currently funded in the budget at a particular level. Our discussion is about providing additional funding for additional service for lighting and landscaping. When we reconvene on July 26, most of that meeting is going to be about lighting and landscaping. This document that you're adopting is a plan. That's all it is, gentlemen. It's a plan. This plan may be amended at any time. Typically, we amend the plan at mid-year, which is somewhere January or February. If we need to do an interim amendment before then, then we'll do an interim amendment before then. This is a plan. There is nothing keeping us from amending it. This is a very flexible document. So if we come up with a solution in July, or come up with a solution in November or December, you're always have the ability to reopen this document, add appropriations, and the like. So I just wanted to make sure everyone's clear that this is a budget. It is a flexible document.
May I add something, City Manager? Under the state law, we also have to make sure that, just the council knows as it undertakes deliberations, we have to, by the end of the fiscal year, make sure at least some appropriations are accounted for, because we aren't allowed to expend what we have in budget for. So, as you are considering this, understand that there will need to be a resolution of some form or fashion that comes to this council for adoption prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Which is when?
June 30th. Which, which could be in the form of, so it's the budget as presented, and if not, then it's the form of a continuing resolution to essentially authorize the expenditures under the California Constitution. I just wanna make sure that's clear. We do have a limited duty, as it relates to appropriations, to pass something before the end of the fiscal year.
And what I propose here in this budget is to keep the services at the level that they're currently at. And yes, I know that there are concerns out there in the community. But, one month from now, we will be revisiting lighting and landscaping again. So we're not done with that discussion. And that will probably take us through the end of July, and possibly into August, until we discuss solutions. Now, the question is, what's the solution? And that's a harder question to answer, and that's why we're doing a number of things in the background, which you all are aware of, and we'll bring those things to you at the end of July. But meanwhile, I at least ask that you pass this budget so we could actually continue the services at the level we have now. Because with no appropriation authority, all those services stop. You know, you think you got complaints now. I'm just saying.
So, all right, thank you for elaborating on that, and thank you, Frank, for bringing up the, so I wanted, I wanted to kinda come, I had some notes here about that. And so, I think, you know, it is important to know that I, I probably, over the weekend, got at least three emails regarding landscaping. I had two different groups of people. One was two ladies, and one was a husband and wife today that came into my place of business to specifically talk to me about something to do with Parks and Recreation, mowing, weed abatement, so on and so forth. So, today, I was especially inundated extra by that. I had an email, one of the emails over the weekend specifically said, and I'll just kinda go from it, paraphrase. She said that she had bumped into a citizen who had been weed, who was weed eating some of their walking path over on the east side. She asked the citizen, "Why are you weed eating?" He said, "I'm sick and tired of waiting for the city to do their part." She asked why, you know, the typical question, "Why are we not doing our part?" I did explain to her the situation and everything, and tried to answer that in the same way I always do. But one of her paragraphs really kinda, kinda caught me, you know, just kinda hard, and it said, "Well, you know, when are the elected officials like yourselves gonna step up and do something and help out, instead of us citizens have to take it upon themselves?" Now, clearly, I don't know that this person may follow along and know that, all the efforts that are done in the community, but this is, this is something that's front and center, and I, on a day-to-day basis, this is a topic for me. What I'm afraid of is, and I get we have to approve a budget, so there's a conundrum here. What I'm afraid of is that we come back on July, and we're presented with options, and we say, "Okay," council says, "Okay, great. We wanna add X amount of money in the budget to, to bridge that gap between now, you know, obviously, we're trying to bridge a gap to a longer-term solution. So we're looking at, you know, options to get us for a few months or whatever. Should we come to a consensus on July and decide that we wanna add X amount of dollars, then, correct me if I'm wrong, that would be an addendum. We would have to then bring that back as an addendum to the budget. We would have to then vote on it. And there would be protocols and subsequent having to take place. So we're looking at probably a couple months out. What I'm afraid of is we're gonna get into the fall before we even have done anything. I mean, I can drive into the City of Galt right now, right up here, actually, right up here. I can turn in, and the first thing I see when I come into town in the median is a weed that's about that tall, right? And the first thing I see, before I even see the "Welcome to Galt" sign, I see this weed. And what bothers me is that we have a $16.5 million budget, and we can't even figure out a solution to spray weeds, and we haven't been for several months. And I know the reasons we've been given. We had weed sprayers, that we left the positions. I get all that. But it seems to me that I just don't understand why we can't just figure something out in the interim to get this done. We were told at one, one meeting, there was somebody talking about, for a consultant or something, for 50 grand. It was suggested, well, can we take the 50 grand and get weed sprayed, you know, to make, to make a dent? I mean, we're in summertime. If we get these weeds knocked down, they won't come back. And Mr. Solis, I remember saying, "Well, we can't for 50 grand, it's whatever." So what I, what I keep hearing is, honestly, I'm having trouble looking at citizens in the face when they come to me every day, and giving them an answer that I don't feel stupid saying anymore. I'm literally just, I feel like my own excuses are just not good enough anymore. It's like, people are like, literally taking hands. I saw, and this is no joke, I saw a Galt citizen weed eating the overpass grass up here on C Street, and that is not like, and I recognized him. I'm not gonna give him up who it is, but I literally saw a citizen doing that. I mean, that, that's pretty bold to have that. So, what I'm wanting is, we need to do something. I mean, we need to do something, even if it's a small something to get us. We need, you know, find some funds to get a contractor to spray the weeds, to knock that down. So at least it looks decent, presentable. And then, we can meet on July, and we can talk about, you know, funding to bridge that gap. Excuse me, I'm almost finished. I'm sorry. So, I just, it's just, it's super frustrating. Like, I just feel like this is such a huge concern to the citizens, and all we're doing is, you know, talking about this, that. I mean, I just, I don't know. I think I've made the point. I don't need to keep a laboring the...
So, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me offer this to you. We'll have the discussion about lighting and landscaping on July 26. If council at that time decides to amend the position, that item will be on the agenda on August 2. You will amend the budget at that point in time, and as soon as I get the 4-0 vote, the budget is amended. And then, we can proceed with putting the resources in place to go to that next level of service.
Is there, so let me ask you this. I know that you have, you have authority under a certain amount, dollar amount, to do things without having to come through us.
30,000.
So, is there anything we can do, anything we can do, or maybe give me an update, maybe I'm not privy to, on what we can do about getting the remainder of the weeds and stuff sprayed in this town before August? We can't wait till August. We just, it can't. We can't wait till August. I'm sorry. I just, it can't wait. I mean, I just, I have a hard time struggling that we can't just come up with something.
Okay. You mean the city weeds citywide?
I'm mainly concerned with the main roadways. I'm not so much talking about getting into the, like, the walking paths and the bike paths. I'm talking about the main roadways. When you, when you drive down C Street right now, you'll see weeds that are various lengths on the sidewalk, in the middle medians. I mean, it just looks bad. And if we could just optically take care of that, and just show the citizens we're making an effort to bridge this to July 21, 26, and then we could, whatever. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay. So, I will talk with Director Solis, and let's see what we can do. Director Selling, if he's hearing me, I wish, I'm gonna ask him to step in here, because I'm gonna ask him to give us some estimate for the centerline miles that are, that make up the main roadways. I'm trying to get this narrowed down. So I know we're talking about C Street. I know we're talking about the overpasses. We're talking about A Street as well?
Well, I'm mainly concerned with just your main thoroughfare sidewalks and medians. Those are, those are the ones that people are looking, I mean, I mean, I don't, you know, get into the, get into the, get into the weeds of the conversation, but it's, I mean, it is probably the number-one discussion right now, currently, that I get hit with on social media, emails, messages right now. And I'm almost, I'm just kind of...
Understood.
Fatigued with talking about it.
So, I'm trying to come up with a plan. So, Mike, can you give me an idea? How many miles are we talking with C Street?
I would say, what you're talking about, you're probably in the four to five mile range.
Okay. So probably A Street would be about the same?
Well, I'm just talking about all the roads, not just C Street itself. So, C Street itself is like, maybe, maybe a mile, if that's...
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. So I think when you think of like Lincoln, C, A Street, you know, those fourth, you know, F, some of those, so. And if you're only talking about median roadways, did I hear, Mayor?
I'm talking about medians and sidewalks. Like, the main, you know, it's just, I mean, parks is another thing, but when you have weeds in a planner, I mean, it's not as in-your-face kinda thing as when you're pulling up, you know, to your, to your local stop sign, and you have a weed. It's like, higher than your, whatever. I just wanna say, first of all, 'cause he's in here, that Mr. Solis's team, with the money he has now, and what they're doing now, are, and again, the money with your department as well, you guys are working super hard, keeping the, on the mowing schedule and stuff that we are currently under. I'm only simply talking about the weed thing, because that's something that I understand. It fell through the cracks. There was some circumstances, whatever. But I just feel like we just can no longer kick that can down the road anymore months, because I think if we can get on it, and I think, you know, it's summertime with the heat, we're not gonna see those weeds sprouting up. We don't got more rain coming, I don't think. And I think that would help us get to a place where we can then have the landscaping conversation in a bigger, in a month or so.
So, why don't you give me, give me a week to sit down with Director Selling and Director Solis, and come up with a plan, and I'll communicate that to council?
And I mean, and this is just me. I don't know, again, I have three of my colleagues here. I don't know if I'm the only one that feels like this, but I, I just feel like for me to feel good about approving this budget tonight, with, with the understanding that we're gonna, we can do addendums with Parks and Rec, with a larger topic, I would like to see, that's kinda like throwing me a bone here with that. I, that would, that would make me very happy.
So, we'll come up with a plan. Again, we'll look at the centerline miles of our main thoroughfares and see how we decide median, median roadways. And then, we'll figure out what we can do to augment Director Solis's staff, to at least temporarily get that straight. So I'll report out to council what that plan is, and you'll probably see that as a memo. And then, on July 26, we'll report the results of that, as sort of the prelude to our conversation about lighting and landscapes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Manager.
Yeah, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna step away from the mic here. Does anybody have any questions for, actually, Mr. Selling regarding what we just talked about, why he's here, or, or any of the budget stuff? Mr. Lozano, I know you haven't spoken yet, and Mr. Andu?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make the comment, the same thing, you know, lighting and landscaping, that's a big problem. I believe tonight, the budget also need to prove too. But I like to be, from the city manager, have some kind of commitment, strong commitment, within a month or so. So what we're doing, what we're doing at the level of the service, is citizens out there, they're not happy. And myself, I'm not happy. So we do need to change. We need to do some kind of commitment as soon as possible, so we can take care of that. Have something, we have a commitment. I believe we need to move forward.
You have my commitment, sir.
I had a couple of questions that were answered by Mr. Boring. One of them was, and then the other one, I answered myself by reading. I know, strange. I too am not excited about what our streets look like. And certainly would love to have something done as soon as possible. I do wanna point out, though, one thing I think we haven't talked about tonight, regarding the lighting and landscape budget as presented. We have been talking about this particular item since, since March 15th. And even before that, I think it's important that the public knows that the council has been briefed regularly since before the fall about the plan moving forward with the lighting and landscape districts, and the funding for that. And staff, meaning Director Solis, has put together a menu of what it would cost to increase the amount of service from what we currently have authorized and what's currently in the budget. So we've had, we are on meeting six or seven now regarding this, and at, at some point, we're going to get to a point where we need to move on the lighting and landscaping. It's a process. And I might be stepping out of turn here a little bit, but part of that was to determine what the community needed. And I've been talking about that for three years here. We can't just do something that the community doesn't want. And so, the city, as you all have probably received emails, or phone calls, or something about what is important to the city as we develop this budget. I am, I would wish we had more money. I would ask my colleagues, between now and the time we vote on this budget, what, where do we take the additional money from to increase the lighting and landscape service that we're providing? If we can come up with that, between now and the time we need to vote on this, so that the bills can continue to get paid, I'd be happy to discuss it. I certainly would love to see a plan to get rid of weeds. of weeds. But I think the bigger issue is this. We have a fundamental structural deficit issue with lighting and landscape. This isn't something that's new to the city. It's not something new to cities or jurisdictions in California. Yes, we've been talking about it for a long time. And we are at a point where we're gonna have to do something about it, whether it is in July, or August, or November, or next year, whatever it is. But we need to get to that point. I wanted, I, I had some comments that I was gonna make before I got to the meeting tonight. I'm gonna bypass most of those, because it's kind of, this is kind of taking a different, different vibe. So, but I do want to thank my colleagues and certainly staff for providing the information that we need to make decisions. It's not always fun, like Councilmember Vandenberg said, those, these decisions aren't always fun. But I am comfortable that we are at a point where we know what the citizens need and want as it relates to all the funding in the, in the city. And I'm comfortable that the citizens want additional services related to mowing and of our landscape medians, as well as our parks. And so I'm willing to move in that direction and get, and get there. But I've been a part of many budget processes. And this was probably the most comprehensive. I had a lot of questions upfront, and as we got them, as we went through this process, I got them answered. And so today, there were just a few questions. One was a typo. And, and I don't have any other questions related to the actual budget. And I certainly will make my thoughts known about the position when it comes that time in the agenda that we were talking about eliminating. So that's all I have. Again, I just want the public to know that this isn't something that was sprung upon me. And I certainly have been in the, in the loop about what has been going on in the lighting landscape realm for quite some time. So, but I would be supportive of coming up with a plan between now and, and before January 26, certainly about the weeds and, and I think the main corridors would probably be the best, like the mayor said, you know, really, really hit those, the main roadways as well as the medians. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. And yeah, thank you for pointing that out. It just, you know, since you and I took office three and a half years ago, this has been, you know, obviously we had some setbacks with our budget cuts in 18, and then pandemic, and obviously that all came, you know, took a backseat. Other things more important, but you're right. It's like, we've had so many meetings on this, and I keep telling people, we're talking about it, we're meeting. If you have watched any meetings, we talk about lighting, we talk about, you know, lighting and landscape, and we talk about Parks and Rec. Almost every meeting, it comes up in some form. But when the citizens look at me and they go, okay, but how much longer are you gonna keep talking about it until you do something? That's, and I think to go, not to kick a very sensitive subject, but I think that's where Mr. Vandenberg came from. He said, the first time we actually have some money available, this is what the public perception is, the first thing that we want to do is we want to like beef up City Hall. We want to add some positions. We want to do this. We want to, whatever. And the people are like, really? Like, you have, you can't do this, but you can, whatever. And that's where it's coming from. That's where that sensitive nerve is coming from that I think Mr. Vandenberg and I are talking about. So, but I echo most of what Councilmember Lozano said, and I look forward to doing something. I had a couple other questions about the budget regarding the commission funding. Just want to clarify. So the commission funding that we asked for last meeting was, looks like it's gonna total about $12,000 from the general fund. It looks like, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff has reached out to the commissions and asked them to come back with budget requests. And we have beautification at $1,000, aging at $5,000, and GYC at $5,000. So these are the requests they put in. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. And we actually have a separate item, item N in the council agenda tonight.
I'm sorry, you're right.
We'll actually discuss it, but their request, forgive us, but we've, we've built in their request into the budget. And assuming council would approve the budget, and so we can get the commissions and committees funded.
So question, because we're on a budget now, if we were to approve the budget, would that not in turn approve item N, where we're looking for direction about?
It would approve item N, but the thing about item N is you get, we provide clarity on what the request is.
But if we were to approve the budget under the item we're discussing now, it would include that $12,000?
Yes. Yes. And if there's any part of those budgets that you aren't comfortable with, as we go through an item N, then the first chance we amend the budget, we will remove those appropriations.
Well, I am happy to see that, was happy to see that these groups came back and.
Yes.
Did apparently ask for, I know that we've set a $5,000 tentative cap, but based on the historical amounts that they had been given, these, all these groups have asked for less than they were given historically. So I appreciate them, you know, asking for what they needed, although they did, two of them did the $5,000 cap. But I, I support that in the budget. I think that's a good use of funds. The only other question I had really regarding the budget was just, that we haven't talked about, would be, I don't know, I think we actually mentioned that already. I don't think I have anything else right now. So if any of my fellow councilmembers have any other additional items regarding the budget, or would you want to see if there's any public hearing? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Okay. So we have a public hearing open right now regarding the budget. So someone wished to speak, they could actually speak without doing a speaker sheet, if I'm correct. And, or you can call on the phone. So, anything from council further? All right. Well, there's no public comment. And no public comment online. Tina?
Nope.
All right.
Online.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And if there's no further discussion from council, do, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the budget as presented this evening?
So moved.
I wanted to ask one, just to, just for crystal clear clarification, we are expecting the July 26 meeting to be brought back with options for Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir. An entire meeting is about Parks and Rec. We may include warrants, because there's some procedural things we have to do, and a consent agenda. But that meeting will be focused on Parks and Rec, and lighting and landscaping, and landscaping issues.
Does anybody want to second the motion by Councilmember Lozano?
I do second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. Can I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Vandenberg?
No.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Farmer?
Aye. Budget is approved four to zero.
Three to one.
Sorry, three to one. My bad. I apologize, Mr. Vandenberg. All right. With that, thank you, Mr. Boring and other, Mr. Selling and Mr. Hines. Moving on to item L, regular calendar. Do we have anything this evening?
None this evening.
All right. Moving on to item M, communication.
I just want to remind everyone, July 5 meeting, council meeting is canceled.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item N, city clerk's report. Item one is gonna be the committee slash commissions funding requests, provide direction to staff regarding the amount of funding for city commissions.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
So, we did just talk about it. Per your direction, beautification came back with $1,000 per fiscal year for a total of $2,000. Commission on Aging submitted a one-year budget proposal requesting $5,000 for fiscal year '22 to '23, with an approximate balance of $2,099 being carried forward. And Galt Youth Commission submitted a two-year budget, $2,500 each year for a total of $5,000, with an approximate balance of $7,420 being carried over. I don't see any of them here. If you have any questions, but you do have discussion on it, if you'd like.
All right. Anything from council on this item?
No, sir.
I have something real quick. In reading through this, I just want to make sure that, that the commissions and committees understood that we run a two-year budget cycle?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect.
And with clarification, I did clarify with Commission on Aging, it is just that amount for the first fiscal year. So they will not have anything the second year.
All right. Any public comment on this particular item?
No public comment.
Clarification on the Commission on Aging, I don't want Bob pounding down my door tomorrow morning. It was for one year. They're gonna reevaluate it for next year. I just want, I want it understood that we're not closing the doors for them for the next fiscal year. This was for the first year, seeing what the needs are, as they may change, and they'll come in with a request for the second year of the two-year budget.
Okay. All right. We'll have to revisit that when we get to the second year. Commission on Aging may have misinterpreted. Was it $5,000 per year? Or was it $5,000 total?
In my email, I asked, they knew it was $2,500 per year.
Okay.
And he specifically said it was $5,000 for the first fiscal year.
And it says one year.
Right.
And it also says they're gonna carry over $2,000 beyond the first year.
Understood. So they may be relying on any carryover. But we should be alert that they may come back in year two with another request.
Right. Because the consent, I mean, the direction of the council was that we allow up to $5,000 per year, right? Yeah, that's what it was.
$5,000, $2,500 per year, $5,000 max.
I'm sorry, $5,000 max per year, though.
Per budget.
Per budget year.
By annual.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't understand that that's what.
Yeah, that's why you have like the commission, well, I guess the Galt Beautification Committee is.
Yeah, I see.
But you see how they broke it out into two different years, for $1,000 in each, and also the Youth Commission as well.
Okay.
Well, my mis.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's a need to revise or entertain another proposal, again, this is a flexible document. And Chair Baillier is always welcome to provide another proposal.
Well, and I think the fact that they all did ask for something within the 25 per year, I guess there wasn't really a problem. I mean, if there was a problem, I think there would be, but, so yeah, I appreciate that. And if that is an issue, then yeah. But, okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Solis. Does anybody have any other comments about this particular item? All right. Any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. Well, with that, do we, so do we need any direction? We've already approved that in the budget. So I think the direction is that, I think the direction, from, at least from my standpoint, understanding would be, we did approve the $12,000 that they asked for, and that is there, if there is a need to revisit next year because of, that we would, the council would have a chance to talk about that or something, right? Is that kind of what we're, is that the, yeah?
I think staff is just looking for consensus on green lighting, their proposal, and it sounds like they got it.
All right.
And I, and I just want to make a comment. I appreciate the committees and commissions just on short notice like this. And I know at least one of them had significant staff assistance with it. So thank you, everybody, for getting that in and getting it done, so we could get it done in time to approve the budget for this next two years. So that was good work.
Yeah. All right. Well, moving on, item O, comments by staff. Mr. Hines?
I believe that, let's see, any, any announcements from parks with Director Solis? And if there are none, it's okay. But I'm sure there's always events that you'd like to let folks know.
Yes, there are events coming up. Independence Day celebration on Saturday, July 2. Our Saturday Market, July 2. Our concerts and movies in the parks have started. They will go in on the second week of July. I was just notified that we will be bringing a vaccination day on June 30 at the Shabola Center. That'll be held in conjunction with our testing. We'll get more information out once I finalize all the details. And then the under 12 Galt Youth Baseball will host the state tournament at Harvey Park this year. So we'll be working with them to try and get that area completely cleaned up and ready to go, to put our best foot forward for the state. And I believe that's everything that I have right now. Do you have a question for me?
Mr. Solis, could you give me an update on the pool? I had somebody asking about the pool closure. I know it'll be open for the fireworks in the pool and the, but when does the pool reopen, or is it open?
It has been open. We've closed twice for staff shortages. And we project that we will be closing two to three more times in the next three weeks due to staff shortages.
Is this just random days, or is it like lengths of time?
They're random days. One's a Tuesday, one's a Friday, one's, I think, a Monday.
Okay. So, and yeah, I know that's an issue with staff. So is this something that we try to post online when we know, or is this something that gets put up at the fence, or what?
We will put it on social media.
Okay.
Find out. We put it, we also put it on our website. We also put it on the signs at the entrance.
All right. Yeah, I don't realize, I drove by, I was at your office of the day, dropping off something, and I didn't realize, you know, how many people are using the pool. It's, it's, a lot of people use the pool, especially this time of year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Solis. Captain Small?
Thank you. The only thing I have is, I think most of you know that Sergeant Craig Walton retired this last Sunday after almost 30 years of service to the city of Galt. And so he's moved on to chief position at Cal Expo Police Department. And we're very happy for him. But I just wanted to point that out and once again, recognize the amazing level of service he provided this community for the last 30 years. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Small. Public Works Director, Mike Selling?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to let everyone know, if you saw it in the newsletter, we've got the, the new wayfinding signs are going up around town. So they look really good. And so that'll probably be progressing over the next couple of weeks or so. We'll be removing the old ones and putting in some new ones. And should, should provide a nice aesthetic enhancement to the city. And hopefully, if we can get these weeds and stuff taken care of, you know, I think in tandem, that'll, that'll be a nice, you know, improvement for the city. I think, and I don't want to take too much of Stephanie's thunder here, but part of our issue is resources. And so we've got some open positions, vacancies that we're just trying to fill and, and obviously prioritize the work and stuff, too. So, so bear with us. I know that just probably sounds a little rote at this point, but that is unfortunately the reality to some extent, too. So, but that's about it. Thank you.
All right. Finance Director, Matt Boring?
Good evening. I don't have any comments tonight.
All right. Thank you. Human Resources Director, Stephanie Van Stein.
Is this working? Okay. No updates from my department, but I just thought I would clarify. Whenever we do have an approved vacancy by City Council, it has to go through our NeoGov applicant tracking system. So it is very meticulous. The requisition is input by the department. It goes through budget review. It has to get approved by budget. And then HR will actually post the job. And so I just thought I would clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. All right. And so from economic development, our business, our ARPA business program is up and running. And we've got folks that have submitted applications and awards are currently being generated. So I'm happy to see that that is moving along nicely. And that concludes our report.
All right. Moving on to comments by city council members, future agenda items. Mr. Sandu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things I would like to mention. Thank you, staff, for thorough and detailed reports. Thank you for the public comment. Thank you for the beautification committee and the youth commissioner, another day for cleanup last weekend. On the few events I joined, I attended on June 14, groundbreaking ceremony with Mayor Farmer and the staff members. That was an info project by Radio Trek. His name is Dog Self-Storage and RV Parking. On June 16, I joined promotion and swearing in. On June 16, I joined promotion and swearing and ceremony at police department. A congratulation to new hires and promoter supervisor. I also would like to thank Sergeant Craig Walton over the last 30 years for his service. A congratulation for his retirement and also getting the new job for as a chief. I also joined chamber lunching with my fellow council member and city staff members. A good turnout, food was delicious. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to staff for the reports, quite thorough. I appreciate it. I wanted to thank the, my alma mater, the Warriors, for working with the mayor and cleaning up someone's home. I believe, I just wanted to acknowledge that, I'm sure the mayor will expand on it, but I believe the coach is quite fond of community outreach and that's an excellent thing to see along with the beautification committee that I know he's passionate about. And then finally, I want, asking for my fellow council members' support to remove or make an agenda item for the next city council meeting to remove the accounting position mentioned earlier.
We have that direction?
Yes.
Yes.
But you clearly wanted it to be brought up at this time, correct?
I just wanted to make sure, so there's no confusion, we have three council members, Councilman Vandenberg, Mayor Farmer, and Vice Mayor Sandu that I saw, yes. Okay.
That's all. Thank you.
All right. Can I make a comment before we get off that subject?
Sure.
I, I, as everybody knows, I have no problem discussing anything and, and certainly want to be open and transparent about what we're thinking. And I think the public square is a great place to do that. Here is my thought on this particular position. And unless I misinterpreted, Councilmember Vandenberg, let me know. My, my understanding is, is that the reasoning behind wanting the position removed from anywhere in the city is because funding for that position was requested twice and we are, and you felt that the council was disrespected so that we, because it was, it was brought back so quickly and that is the reason why we're removing the position? So if that's the case, I have a hard time with that. Here's why. If it is a position that we have approved as a sta, as a, as a council and staff clearly believes at some point in time we're going to need that position, because our feelings got hurt is not a reason to remove a position. I just want to make that, that's, that's my, I'll have that discussion when we come back, certainly, but that's the only thing I heard. So help me.
Sure. I'd be glad to help you. My feelings aren't hurt. This, this position isn't about your feelings and if you're making a choice based on feelings, you should really think harder about what you're doing. The position was brought back the third time without ad vacation, just kind of slipped into the budget. I made that quite clear. And the reason I personally didn't want to see this position filled is because our negotiation, parks and recs, that's $100,000, that this position is a 13th over and above the 12th that would made full staff in previous history. So I feel like the citizens have yet to see their basic lighting and landscaping maintenance return to normal while staff is requesting for this, for financing an over and above position. It doesn't appear fair. We have tough decisions to make about what little, we have, we're apparently better, but what little money we do have, we're squeezing the turnout pretty hard here. So to say that we can keep staff at full staffing, keep accounting up at full staffing and still save $114,000 for lighting and landscaping maintenance that's sorely needed, those are my two main.
And, and out of all respect for Mr. Vandenberg and Lozano, I don't think we need to belabor this and this, this is, we were asking this to come back to discuss and Mr. Vandenberg will have ample opportunity to make his case for it. And Councilman Vandenberg, Papino will be here at present and we, at that time, I think we could deliberate. I don't want to get too off on discussing it, kind of, we're kind of discussing it right now when it's supposed to be brought back to be discussed, so.
Well done. Well done, Mayor. No, totally understand. I just wanted to make the point that that was my assumption as to why we were bringing it back. If that is wrong, I mean, we've removed it from the budget, but if that is wrong, love to have the discussion about it at a later time. But if that was just it, then I'd have a problem with that. But we're good.
Thank you, Councilmember. Was that all you had, Mr. Vandenberg, for the, for your comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you for checking.
Councilman Lozano?
Yeah, that's pretty much all I had.
Well, for myself, I also attended the groundbreaking with some of our staff. City manager was there. We had some other staff. Vice Mayor was there. It was nice to see that piece of land, which my family had actually owned for like probably longer than I've been alive, finally become something, so it was nice. The GPD, the ceremony, Galt PD was very nice. Congratulations again, Captain Small and the other officers who promoted. Definitely a historic time for the department to see such movement within the, the organization. Of course, a huge thank to, a huge thank you to Officer Walton for his almost 30 years of service. I mean, one could go on and on. I mean, I remember I was probably, gosh, I don't know, a few years out of high school when he started here. Yeah, yeah. So he's been a mentor to many, been a huge figure in the community and we wish him all the well in his service at Cal Expo. So thank you, Craig, for all your service. I wanted to remind everybody about IDC stuff, but Mr. Solis reminded, already touched on that. So if you are interested in being in the parade or the Kevin Ton run or any of the festivities, go online to City Galt. And last but not least, I did want to thank our code enforcement officer, TJ Godati, Coach Mervin Brookins, Mr. Baillier, and also especially Cal Waste for stepping up and to help us organizing this little community project we did for a citizen in town. And we had the coach, Coach Lewis, which is one of the other coaches, came out, 10 players showed up and they brought tools, brought some weed eaters and we made a huge dent. And so I want to say thank you for that and to all those people for making that happen. Yeah, go ahead.
Just when you're done.
No, go ahead, no.
No, I just have one last thing and I forgot to mention this. On, on this Saturday, the 25th, from 10 to 1 o'clock at the Ray House, there's going to be a community event hosted by the Historical Society for Sergeant Walton and his retirement. So if you have a chance, swing by 10 o'clock to 1, anytime, no specific program, but just come by and say hi. And that's it.
All right. Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. And then last, just want to mention, for those who may not know, we have the military vehicles are going to be in the parade this, this year again after a, a few-year absence. And traditionally, what we had done before was do a, kind of a barbecue event for the people, the guys that bring those vehicles up and, and Mr., our vice mayor has been very gracious enough to host that. It's going to be Friday evening from 5 to 7, 5 to 7 on Friday evening, the 1st, so July 1st. This is the day before the parade at the Best Western Hotel on South Lincoln Way or on North Lincoln Way, I'm sorry. We'll have all the vehicles will be there, I'll be cooking some food, there'll be some music and the, and the families are able to come and bring their children. Children can climb on the military vehicles and check them out and, and see them up and close and touch them and everything prior to the parade the next day. So I just want to mention that. So 5 to 7 on, on July 1st. So with that, I have nothing else. And again, thank you, staff, for reports tonight and a robust discussion from my fellow colleagues here. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting at 7:33.